Good afternoon. Welcome to the August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five City of Apopka Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. If you would all please stand with me for the pledge and a moment of silent prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic which is saying one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, First item is approval of the meeting minutes from May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Anyone have any changes or deletions? Motion by Commissioner Washington. Do I have a second?
Aye, second.
Second by Commissioner Wood. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number two, meeting minutes from June tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Does anyone have any additions or changes or deletions?
Again, I'm making motion to accept.
Motion by Commissioner Washington. Thank you, sir. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Wood. Thank you, sir. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. During tonight's meeting, each agenda item will have a time for members of the public to speak upon that individual item. That will be called during that, the reading. If anyone has anything planning and zoning related that is not on the agenda tonight wishes to speak, now would be the time to be recognized. Seeing none, we'll carry on. Alright. We have a change to the agenda tonight. Ordinance three, one, two, one, Future Land Use Magic Houses LLC has been pulled from one fifty-five M.A. Board Street Small-Scale Future Land Use Amendment. This item has been pulled. It was scheduled for planning position tonight. The item has been pulled because the applicant failed to meet the deadline mailing for the public hearing notice to the surrounding properties within three hundred foot radius. As required by LDC two point four point seven point C point two. The item will be rescheduled for September ninth. City of Apopka did put the advertisement in the paper done by staff on July eighteenth through Apopka Chief. So anyone here is for that. I apologize, but that's going to be rescheduled for September. Alright.
Mister Chairman, there was one other item that had been advertised for this evening's meeting as well. It was the Wild Oaks Town Center Code Overlay and Comprehensive Plan Amendment. That was advertised. However, the staff did not put that on the agenda. The applicant requested it be on September's agenda.
Okay, do we need to read that into the record? Or did you just?
I just announced it for the record. Yes, sir.
Attaboy. Okay. Item number one, Legislative Ordinance number three, one, zero, five, Future Land Use, seven twenty-four West Keen Road. Owners, Dave D. Warkine, forty LLC. Applicant, Logan Upshaw. Mister Hamza.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amir Hamza. The applicant has submitted a small-scale future land use amendment for from agriculture and in progress to residential medium-low for properties located at seven twenty-four, six thirty-two, and six oh eight West Keen Road, along with two seven five one Martin Road. And all four properties are located on the southeast corner of West Keen Road and Martin Road. These are the vicinity and aerial maps of the seven twenty-four, six thirty-two, and six oh eight West Keen Road and two seven five one Martin Road properties. The total site area for all four properties combined is around thirty-eight point five nine acres. The applicant is requesting the future land use amendment to be able to develop a subdivision in the future that includes single-family and townhomes, single-family homes and townhomes. The future land use is agriculture in in progress and is proposed to change to residential medium-low as shown on the future land use map. The zoning is currently agriculture and transitional, proposed to change to RMF residential multifamily as shown on the zoning map. This is a concept plan of the combined properties that was sent by the applicant. And as you can see, it includes single-family and townhomes, but this is not a, this is not a plan that was submitted as ever. It's just a concept plan of what could, what may or could come in the future. The Development Review Committee has recommended approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the future land use amendment based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits. Staff and applicant are available for further questions or comments.
Alright. Anyone have questions of staff?
I have a question.
Alright, Commissioner Washington.
It's noted in the staff report that we're looking for a proposed residential medium-low future land use designation. But makes mention that another project may be submitted in the near future with the same land use designation. I'm just curious, what's the staff's report on that one?
Currently, they haven't submitted anything as of yet. We've had the just discussions, preliminary discussions in the, you know, with staff and just applicant, but nothing has been submitted as of yet.
Yeah, and to add, that property had been annexed in the city, probably in mid-two thousand twenty-four. It's about a thirty-something acre tract, but as Amir had indicated, they've had some preliminary meetings with staff about the future land use and zoning, but that's about as far as we've gotten so far.
Okay, so there's some activity, some discussion about that. Okay, good.
Yes, sir.
Alright, any more questions of staff? Very well. Is applicant present? Do they have a presentation?
Good evening, Logan Upshaw, Lowndes Law Firm, two one five North Yola Drive. No presentation, and I'll be brief. I know it's a big agenda tonight. Thanks to Amir for the staff report. I'll note this is the Dewar Nurseries property. You're likely familiar that there's two properties that make up that operation. This is the southern portions of south side of Keen Road. So we're not dealing with the north. I just wanted to make that clear if it wasn't already so. And you know, the area's seen a lot of growth. You have Emerson Park, Hilltop Reserve, Emerson Point. All of those are within under a mile and at about fifteen units per acre. The concept plan we provided was really just an exercise in our discussions with commissioners and with staff. It's to code. But it's conceptual to illustrate that when all of that's laid in to code, trying to maximize the space, it comes out to about five and a half units an acre. It's, you know, could be up to six the way things get clustered in the future. The maximum units would be seven and a half units an acre for our requested future land use and zoning. So that's, that's the reason why you have a concept plan at this juncture. We're not at-site plan. That's not what you'll see when, when it comes back before this body. But just wanted to give you a little bit more color on, on why we did that for compatibility and density conversations. So we have representatives from the applicant team here and myself, of course, happy to answer any specific questions you have.
Alright, great. Does anyone have questions of the app?
Nope, sir.
Alright, very well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Francina Boykin. I live at fourteen eighty-four Elderton Drive, Apopka, Florida, three two seven zero three. Can I speak? Yeah, okay.
Whatever you want to say.
Oh, sure. Okay. I'm a native of the region of Keen Road, Lake Jewel. I listened to the gentleman said he told about the other growth with Emerson Park, Emerson Point, you know, and my neighbor, new neighbors, the Emerson. I get them mixed up, Park or Point, but they're on the east side of Martin Road, which abuts, you know, my, the subdivision abuts my property. They mentioned those subdivisions, but I didn't hear them mention about the stagnant pollution that's in that area with emissions from the landfill, from the waste incinerator. You know, we have all of that in that region. And I've watched this area just bust wide open with growth in the last fifteen years. So with this particular project on Keen Road, how far are you with the status of accepting or rejecting the application, applicant's application? What other stages or what stage are they at this point?
What we're doing now is the future land use, which is just the change. Just to clarify, the state has a map of the entire state, and we have to request the future land use change that changes that use from agricultural to industrial, agriculture, residential, or vice versa. And then the next step in the process is the zoning. How the city zones that property, is it residential, is it industrial? That'll be the next agenda item. It's actually right.
In line with this. As far as what they build there and how they build that, that comes further in the process. And they'll, they'll submit a site plan, and then the planning and staff will go over that. The density level is what we're approving now, what they're going to use the land for, but not the specifics of how that's going to be done. This is just to say you can build five houses on every acre, but it doesn't say how that's going to be done. That's more specific later on. But there's, actually, I believe with the city council included four, or maybe, correct me, Bobby, five more times that this will be in front of somebody where you'd have a chance to speak and
Oh, okay.
Give your opinion.
I was just curious as to, this seems to be a very, like, most of the projects have been for the last ten years, you know, pretty massive. And the traffic that we already endure on shock curve, dead man curb, Martin Road, the two-lane twisted highway. I mean roadway, it's not a highway. You know, I grew up when visiting Keen Road was like we were going out of town. All dirt road. Now scared to even go down Keen Road. It's deadly. It's deadly, dangerous. You know, two more, what, two hundred homes, you're saying? Two, two, two hundred more homes that would be proposed for this?
Theoretically, but we don't have a number on that. Again, the specifics aren't.
So is that, you said Martin and Keen Road, is that on the west, that's on the west side with Dewar's Nursery? Well, Dewar's Nursery, it's a nursery.
It's in the south, southeast corner of Martin and Keen.
Southeast cor- southeast corner. Cause that's where the nursery was, right? Yeah, well, I was just curious, cause, you know, I hope plans are implemented to show how to make Martin Roads safer.
Right here.
Okay, that's, that's the nursery. That's in the ditch, huh?
Yeah, the nerd, this is the southeast corner of Martin and Keen.
Oh, okay, yes. Yeah. My cousin, they were out there in the fifties.
Yes, ma'am. I, I understand, I understand your concerns and
Yeah, tell people, make sure y'all tell people that it's a landfill out there.
Ma'am, ma'am.
It's a
Excuse me, ma'am. Ma'am. You, you, you have to speak to the board, not to the people in the audience. Okay. Alright, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this matter? Alright, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
I'd like to propose that we find the proposed change in future land use designation from agriculture in progress to residential medium-low capa- uh, capable capacity with the characters of the surrounding area recommending approval of the future land use amendment subject to the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Motion by Commissioner Woods. Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, item number two, same piece of property. Good evening. Go ahead. This is quasi-judicial. I would have to ask, has anyone on the board had any expedite communication on this matter?
No, sir.
Okay, quasi-judicial, ordinance number three, one, zero, six, change of zoning, seven twenty-four West Keen Road. Mister Hamza.
Alright, so this is the, for the same property, but is the applicant is requesting a rezoning from agriculture and transitional to residential medium, residential multifamily for properties located at seven twenty-four, six thirty-two, six oh eight West Keen Road and two seven five one Martin Road. And again, it is located on the southeast corner of West Keen Road and Martin Road intersection. These are the vicinity and aerial maps of the seven twenty-four, six thirty-two, six oh eight West Keen Road and two seven five one Martin Road properties. And again, the total site area of all the four combined properties is a total of thirty-eight point five nine acres. The applicant is requesting the rezoning to be able to develop a subdivision that includes single-family homes and townhomes. As mentioned before and shown on these maps, the future land use is currently agriculture and in progress and is proposed to change to residential medium-low. The zoning is agriculture and transitional, proposed to change to RMF residential multifamily. This is the concept plan as shown before of the combined properties, and it was sent by the applicant. The Devil Academy has recommended approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the change of zoning based on the findings and facts presented in staff report and exhibits. And the staff and applicant are available for further comments or questions.
Thank you, Mister Hamza. Alright, does anyone have questions of staff?
Nope.
Alright. Does anyone have questions of the applicant? Very well. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion to find a proposed change in zoning from AG agriculture and T transitional to RMF residential multifamily compatible with the character of the surrounding areas recommending approval of the change of zoning subject to findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Motion by Commissioner Washington. Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Norwood. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, ordinance number three, one, zero, eight, Large-Scale Future Land Use, Andich North. Owners, PMS One REO LLC, HMF LLC, Charles P. Stalling, Kim L. Stallings, Yule E. Stallings Junior, and Crystal Denise Stallings. Applicant, Appian Engineering, Carol Luke Clayson. Miss Sanchez.
Good evening, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. Before we get started, I'd like to ask that we strike the first paragraph under the summary of the staff report, as it doesn't relate, it was erroneously placed there. But this request tonight is to recommend approval of the future land use amendment for Andich North from county rural to residential estate. Subject properties are located on the northwest corner of State Road four fifty-three, four twenty-nine, and Andich Road. It's approximately a hundred and ninety-six acres in size. The applicant requests a future land use map amendment from Orange County Rural to City of Apopka Residential Estates to allow low-density residential development with enhanced open space preservation accordance with the city's comp plan, comprehensive plan. The subject property lies within the northern planning area of the joint planning area, JPA, between Orange County and the City of Apopka. The area is characterized by large tracts of open land with minimal existing development. The proposed amendment is intended to facilitate a clustered single-family residential development that will provide a transitional density between the Kelly Park Interchange from Baisco to the south, to the south and the surrounding rural lands. The proposed future land use amendment creates a clear and logical pa- pattern of transitioning densities from high intensity near KPI to rural levels northward, especially given its proximity to State Road four fifty-three. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to find the proposed amendment consistent with the comp plan, compatible with the character of surrounding area, and therefore recommend approval of the change in future land use from county rural to residential, to residential estate for Andich North as well tra- as well as transmittal to Florida Commerce. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, anyone have questions of? Anyone have questions of staff?
Question.
Alright, Commissioner Washington.
Good evening. You said to strike which paragraph?
It's the first paragraph under summary. It's referencing rural, I think it's rural settlement, which we initially discussed with the applicant.
So the first paragraph starts with the subject properties are approximately?
Yes.
So that whole paragraph is out?
Yes, sir.
What it should have started with is the applicant requests?
Yes.
I wish I knew that. I spent about ten hours on that one paragraph.
Oh, you did not. It only took you thirty minutes to read that.
I don't think you noticed it until I pointed it out.
Well, it follows a lot of language in there, to be honest with you, but.
I mean, the, the two designations are very similar in nature, but we decided on the residential estate better, is better suited for this, for these properties.
Does anyone else have questions of staff?
I wanted to ask about, I saw something about habitat study or habitat evaluation.
It's required, so required that with, when projects undergo development review, anything over ten acres, we require habit, have a habitat study as, as well as an environmental assessment for any projects as well, yeah. They usually go hand in hand.
Alright, anyone else questions of staff? Alright, is applicant here and do they have a presentation?
They don't have one.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
No, sir.
Very well. Is there anyone from the public that's here which is to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we find the proposed future land use amendment from county rural to residential estate consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code compatible with the character of the surrounding area. The recommended approval of the future land use amendment and transmittal to Florida Commerce.
Motion by Commissioner Norwood. Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Woods. Thank you, sir. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, item number four, Legislative Ordinance three, one, one, zero, Future Land Use Amendment, the summit at Wolf Lake Ranch. Wolf Lake Ranch Phase Three. Owners, David Lutz, David L. Life Estate, Lutz Mary T. Life Estate, David M. Lutz, Michelle M. Great. Applicant, William Mackey. Location, north of Poncan Road, west of Poncan Pine Road, and west of Jason Dwelly Parkway. Miss Sanchez.
Again, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This request to recommend approval of the future land use map amendment for mixed-use to residential very-low suburban for the summit at Wolf Lake Ranch. The subject properties are situated north of Poncan Road, west of Poncan Pines Road, as well as Jason Dwelly Parkway, and is over twenty-one acres in size. The applicant seeks to amend the future land use designation of about twenty-one acres from mixed use, which permits up to fifteen dwelling units per acre, to residential very-low suburban, which allows up to two dwelling units per acre. The proposed land use change is intended to facilitate a future rezoning and residential development consistent with adjacent phases of the Wolf Lake Ranch community. Subject site is currently undeveloped and designated mixed use on the adopted future land use map. The property is located west of the existing Wolf Lake Ranch Phases One and Two, and is anticipated to be developed as Phase Three of the community. The surrounding area is characterized by detached single-family residential homes and large lots. The proposed residential very-low suburban designation reserved is a logical extension of the Wolf Lake Ranch Phases One and Two developments and provide a compatible transition to surrounding properties. The Development Review Committee recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the change in future land use designation for mixed use to residential ver- very-low suburban for the summit of Wolf Lake Ranch. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Miss Sanchez. Anyone have questions of staff?
I do.
Commissioner Washington.
Can you rewind back to the zoning map?
This one?
Yep.
Yes. Uh, has nothing to do, quite frankly, with the decision in hand now, but as I look at that zoning map, in the future, does the owner have an influence on that other piece of property that's at the top of the T, I call it the T, which seems to be running eventually over to Plymouth Rento Road?
This one, for you?
Yes. I know, I know that part is, I'm just curious. Does the owner have an influence on that?
I, I'm not aware, sir. I don't know if they do. I suggest you ask them when it's time for the applicant to come up here. I don't think they mentioned any kind of influence on that northern property, though, to us.
Very well. Any more questions of staff? Very well. Any questions of the applicant? Anyone?
Well, here he is. Well.
Commissioner Washington.
Did you get my question, sir?
Repeat your question for this record.
Okay. Uh, I clearly understand what you're looking for approval for today. That's great. Uh, I don't live too far from there. It's an amazing project you have going on up there. But just curious, just an eye to the future, right above, just north, immediately north, there's property that runs from the east all the way over to Plymouth Rento Road.
Right.
Is that yours?
No. Now, with this, this is the, just, the, the yellow on the right-hand side of the, this is the existing Wolf Lake Ranch property, partially developed. The other portion is going through the staff review. We got the zoning approved on it. So this is going to be considered Phase Three, but nothing north of us is part of our application or, you know, what we're doing here.
Just curious.
Yeah. My name is Tom Daley, by the way. I'm here with Daley Design Group, nine thirteen North Pennsylvania Avenue. I'm here on behalf of the, the property owners and the applicant.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else questions the applicant? Very well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion to find the proposed future land use amendment from mixed use to residential to find the proposed future land use amendment for a mixed use to residential very low suburban consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas. Recommend approval of the proposed future land use amendment based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Motion by Commissioner Washington, thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Norwood, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This is quasi judicial, same piece of property, has anyone on the board had ex parte communication on this matter?
No, sir.
All righty. Ordinance number three one one one, change of zoning, summit at Wolf Lake, Wolf Lake Ranch Phase Three. Owner David Lutz, Life Estate, applicant William Mackey. Location north of Poncan Road, west of Poncan Pine Road and Jason Dwelly Parkway. Ms. Sanchez.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is the companion rezoning request for the summit at Wolf Lake Ranch requesting to recommend approval of the change of zoning from MUESGT, mixed use east shore gateway to RSF one B, which is residential, single-family, large lot. The applicant requests a rezoning of approximately twenty-one acres from MUESGT to RSF one B to facilitate the development of a low-density detached, single-family residential subdivision. The proposed development will consist of forty-two, single-family homes consistent with the character and density of the adjacent Wolf Lake Ranch Phases One and Two. Subject site lies west of the existing Wolf Lake Ranch community and is currently undeveloped. The requested zoning is compatible with the proposed future land use designation and the surrounding land use pattern. The site is envisioned as Phase Three of the Wolf Lake Ranch community, providing a seamless continuation of the development in this area. The DRC recommends approval, the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the change of zoning from mixed use east shore gateway to residential, single-family, large lot for the summit of Wolf Lake Ranch. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone have questions of staff or applicant?
Yes, sir.
Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend a motion to find the proposed change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area and recommend approval of the change of zoning from MUESGT mixed use east shore gateway to RSF one B, residential, single-family, large lot for the summit at Wolf Lake Ranch.
Motion by Commissioner Woods, thank you, sir, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Norwood, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, ordinance three one one nine, future land use amendment, Cold Lake Logistics. Owners MG eighty-eight Central Florida Cold Storage Two LLC. Applicant Joshua Enot. Location two four two four and two four two eight West Orange Blossom Trail. Mr. Hamza.
For record, Amir Hamza. Uh, the applicant has submitted a small-scale future land use amendment from county industrial to city industrial for property located at, uh, twenty-four twenty-four and twenty-four twenty-eight, uh, West Orange Blossom Trail just west of Al Birch Avenue and east of the school street. These are the vicinity and aerial maps of the two four two four and two four two eight West Orange Blossom Trail sites. The total combined site area for both properties is zero point three eight acres. The app, uh, the applicant is requesting the future land use amendment to be able to expand the existing cold link logistics facility surrounding both properties. As mentioned before and shown on these maps, um, the future land use is county industrial and proposed to change to city industrial. Zoning is a transitional, proposed to change to light industrial. The Development Review Committee has recommended approval, the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the future land use amendment subject to the findings and facts presented in the staff reporting exhibits. Staff and applicant are available for further questions and comments.
Thank you, Ms. Hamza. Anyone having questions of staff or the applicant? Very well, does anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to find proposed change in future land use designation from county industrial to city industrial compatible with the character of the surrounding areas. Recommending approval of the future land use amendment subject to the finding and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Motion by Commissioner Norwood, thank you, ma'am. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Woods, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, same piece of property. This is quasi judicial, so I need to ask if anyone on the board had ex parte communication on this matter?
No, sir.
Very well. Quasi judicial ordinance number three one two zero, change of zoning, Cold Link Logistics. Owners MG eighty-eight Central Florida Cold Storage Two LLC, applicant Joshua Enot. Twenty-four twenty-four, twenty-four twenty-eight, West Orange Blossom Trail. Mr. Hamza.
For the record, Amir Hamza, the applicant is requesting a rezoning from transitional to light industrial for properties located at two four two four and two, and two four two eight West Orange Blossom Trail. Again, with just west of Al Birch Avenue and east of School Street. These are the vicinity and aerial maps of the two four two four and two four two eight, uh, West, uh, Orange Blossom Trail site. The total combined, uh, area for both sites together, um, is, uh, zero point three eight acres. Again, the applicant is requesting the rezoning of both properties to be able to expand the existing cold link logistics facility that is surrounding both properties. The future land use is, uh, county industrial and proposed to change to city industrial. Zoning is a transitional, proposed to change to light industrial. The Development Review Committee has recommended approval, the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the change of zoning uh, subject to the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits and staff and applicant are available for further comments and questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hamza. Anyone have questions of the applicant or, excuse me, staff or the applicant? Very well. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to find proposed change in, change of zoning from transitional to light industrial compatible with the character of surrounding areas. Recommending approval of the change of zoning subject to the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Motion by Commissioner Norwood, thank you, ma'am. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Legislative ordinance number three one two two, small-scale future land use amendment, nineteen twenty, Sheeler Avenue. Owners Marvin Wade Reed and Susan Thomas Reed. Applicant Jonathan Hughes, oh, Hughes, I'm sorry. Location nineteen twenty, Sheeler Avenue. Mr. Song.
Good evening, this is June Zone Planner at the Community Development Department. The applicant has requested a small-scale future land use amendment for the properties located at nineteen twenty, Sheeler Avenue. The total size of the properties is about forty acres, they are currently vacant and residential. The current future land use is county rural allowing one dwelling unit per ten acre and low density allowing four dwelling unit per acre. The applicant has requested to change its future land use to residential low suburban, which allows up to three point five dwelling unit per acre. Surrounding properties within the city has a future land use of residential low and residential high. DRC has recommended approval and the rec, um, and the recommended motion is recommend approval of the proposed change of future land use for nineteen twenty, Sheeler Avenue. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Song. Does anyone have questions of staff?
No.
No.
Anyone have questions of the applicant? Does the applicant have a presentation? Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to find the proposed change in future land use designation from county rural and rural settlement low density to city RLS, residential low suburban consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas. Recommend approval of the proposed change of future land use based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Motion by Commissioner Washington, thank you, sir, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Woods, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, same piece of property. Quasi judicial, I have to ask, has anyone on the board had any ex parte communication on this matter?
Yes, sir.
Very well. Ordinance number three one two three, change of zoning, nineteen twenty, Sheeler Avenue. Owners Marvin Wayne Reed and Susan Thomas Reed, applicant Jonathan Hughes. Location nineteen twenty, Sheeler Avenue, Mr. Song.
For the record, this is June Zone Planner at the Community Development Department. The applicant has requested a rezoning of the, of rezoning for properties located at nineteen twenty, Sheeler Avenue. The total size of the properties is about forty acres and they are currently vacant and residential. Current zoning is T-Transition and the requested zoning is RTF Residential to Family. Surrounding properties within the city are zoned for residential. The DRC has recommended approval and recommended motion is recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning for nineteen twenty, Sheeler Avenue. Staff and applicant are available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Song. Anyone have questions of staff or the applicant? Very well, does anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we find the proposed change of zoning from transitional to residential to family district consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code and compatible with the character of surrounding areas. Recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Motion by Commissioner Norwood, thank you, ma'am, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Woods, thank you, sir. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number ten. This is quasi judicial. Ordinance number three one two four, I have to ask, has anyone on the board had any ex parte communication on this matter?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wood.
I would like to extend from this, uh, particular one. Um, my HOA, which I'm on the Board of Directors, property abuts this, uh, particular development.
Very well. Commissioner Woods recused himself. Right? So, no one else has had any ex parte communication, move on. Ordinance three one two four, change of zoning, planned development amendment, shops at East Shore. Owners East Shops LLC, applicant Lowndes, Carol Jonathan Hughes. Location northwest corner of Bakoye Popka Road and West Keen Road. Ms. Sanchez.
Again, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval of the amendment to the shops at East Shore PD. The subject property is situated on the northeast corner of Bakoye Popka Road and West Keen Road, approximately twenty-eight acres in size. The original PD for the shops at East Shore was approved on November twenty twenty-three. The property is planned for mixed use development, including commercial and senior housing components. During the site development and subsequent engineering process, it was determined that the stormwater needs of the project could be, could be met without the use of lot six previously reserved for stormwater pond. The applicant proposes then to amend the PD to allow the commercial development on the lot. Therefore, the applicant is requesting to convert lot six from a stormwater tract to commercial out parcel with five with five thousand square feet of new commercial entitlements. Adding tire sales and service as an allowed use within the PD and incorporate the updated PD master plan and updated Exhibits A and B. The DRC recommends approval and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the proposed shops at East Shore PD amendment. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez, anyone have questions of staff?
I have a question for the.
Commissioner Washington.
For the developer.
Okay.
The applicant.
Does anyone have questions of the applicant?
Yes.
Very well. Commissioner Washington. Mr. Hughes.
Uh, good evening, Chairmen and Commissioners. My name is Jonathan Hughes with the Lowndes Law Firm, two fifteen North Hilla Drive, Orlando three two eight oh one. Whenever you're ready, I'm ready to answer your questions.
Couldn't let you sit back there too long.
Good to stretch my legs, so appreciate it.
No, I'm just curious, the, um, so lot six is no longer needed for stormwater and, uh, you're going to, um, develop it by putting in a tire shop or service? I think that's the case, right?
Uh, I'm not sure if that's the specific use for that out parcel. Uh, the, the addition of tire sales and service was, was added to this amendment because if you, if you're opening up the PD, um, it's, it's a process that requires a lot of work and so uh, it's oftentimes a developer will say, well, these are some items I'd like to, to tweak if we're going to go in. And so it had been thought for a while to approach the city. We actually had some dialogue with staff previously about whether tire sales and service was covered by automobile uh, service station, which was already a permitted use in the PD. Staff determined it was not. So as part of this amendment, it was, it was a cleanup measure to make clear that tire sales and service was a permitted use.
Okay, so as the property was being developed, what happened that, um, made it, um, that determined that the property was no longer needed for stormwater?
Yeah.
So how's the stormwater, did you underestimate it? Did you manage it differently? What happened?
Good question. So the, the plan that Jean had presented and perhaps that's on here, if I just push it back arrow, yeah. Um, the, the area in questions here, I don't know if you can see my parcel six.
I see it.
So as part of thi- this project, this mixed use project that has multiple phases, multiple uses, including dental office, the Publix, that's anchoring, the retail, it's got a, um, a senior housing component. Um, it, it, um, this plan needed to be presented as part of the approval of the zoning, the PD. And so it was prepared conservatively, showing that area as a stormwater pond. That was not a engineered plan. It was a somewhat of a conceptual plan that did not go through the full hundred percent engineering. Once that process was, once the PD was approved, showing that area as a stormwater pond, that the next steps in the development process were undertaken, which include uh, the construction site planning and the actual permitting with the Water Management District. When those exercises were undertaken, it was determined that the rear dry ponds shown here, uh, as parcel, I believe that's five or six, um, was, was sufficient to accommodate the entire project. And so the engineering plans that now have been approved by the Saint John's River Water Management District and the city for development of the overall parcel property uh, have been designed and will be constructed to accommodate stormwater for the entirety, meaning that this originally proposed stormwater pond on, on, that front it did on, on the, on the. Originally proposed stormwater pond on on that front it did on on the on the public road was no longer necessary. And so it could be reprogrammed for a higher, better use than just open space. And provide additional retail opportunities for for the residences in the area.
Thank you.
Very well, anyone, well, there's only one option, do you have any questions of the applicant?
No.
Very well, thank you, Mister Hules. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion. Not a lot of options, gotta be one of you two.
You're gonna bend my arm, I'll make the motion. Uh to find the proposed amendment to the PD plan development consistent. With the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area. And recommend approval of the shops at East Shore PD plan development amendment. Based on the fact, findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Motion by Commissioner Washington, thank you sir, do I have a second?
I will second.
Commissioner Norwood, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item number eleven, ordinance number three, one, two, five, future land use amendment. Pelucci Acres Residential, residential. Owners Pelucci Acres LLC, applicant Daniel O'Keefe. Location east side of Vic Road approximately quarter mile north of the intersection of Vic Road and West Lester Road. Mister Howell.
Thank you, good evening, for the record Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. The applicant has submitted a small scale future land use amendment from county low density, which permits a maximum density for dwelling units per acre. To city residential low suburban, which permits a maximum of three and a half dwelling units per acre. The applicant is requesting the future land use amendment from to city residential low suburban in order to develop a portion of a planned development. Consisting of single family detached and townhome units on the subject property. The city council voted unanimously to annex the subject properties into the city via ordinance thirty one thirteen. The total site area is thirty nine point eight five acres and is located on the east side of Vic Road. Approximately a quarter mile north of the intersection of Vic Road and West Lester Road. The applicant is requesting the future land use amendment to allow, as I mentioned, the development of townhomes and non-resident and. I'm sorry, for develop development of townhomes and single family homes on the property. Orange County Public Schools has indicated that all units are vested, qualifying the capacity requirement is de minimis. Development Review Committee recommends approval, recommended motion this afternoon and this evening is to. Prove the small scale future land use amendment, um staff still questions, applicant is here as well.
Thank you, Mister Howell, anyone have questions of staff?
Yes, sir.
Anyone have questions for the applicant?
Aye.
All right, very well, the applicant, please come forward.
Good evening, Elisa Salwushatsen Bowen, three hundred South Orange uh South Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida three two eight zero one.
This is just a general question, um in your master plan for the whole area. You have, um I think it's like ten acres or something more than that for a public park. For the whole uh development that you're doing there.
So the overall project is six hundred and eighteen acres. It is proposed for currently one thousand fifty two homes and up to ten and approximately ten acres of commercial uses. And then there is proposed a city park that we've been discussing dedicating um approximately a hundred and forty five acres.
Okay. How, this is just a general question. Once you start developing this, whenever that happens. How soon in the development process will you be doing the park? Cause I understand that becomes a city park at some point along.
That is what we are working through right now in terms of timeframe, we've been working with city staff. And the applicant in terms of understanding what makes sense and what would work best, but we understand the city would like the park as soon as possible.
Okay, so are you looking at the beginning, the middle, or the end of the?
We're looking more towards the beginning, um potentially at the end of the beginning because. The park is proposed to include um a significant, a significant amount of trails. So that the developer would be installing as well, so we want to ensure that A, the developer owns the property. And B, that that development is occurring along with um adjacent development as well. So towards the beginning of the property, towards the beginning of the project as opposed to the end.
Okay, thank you.
Of course, anything else?
Anyone else have questions of the applicant? Very well, thank you ma'am, does anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for this motion.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan. And compatible with the character of the surrounding area. And recommend approval of the change in future land use designation. From county low density to city residential low suburban for Pelucci Acres.
Motion by Commissioner Wood, thank you sir, do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item number twelve, not the same piece of property, but the same applicant. Ordinance number three, one, two, six, future land use amendment Pelucci Acres Commercial. Owner Pelucci Acres LLC, applicant Daniel O'Keefe, south side of Ponton Road, west of Jason Deli Parkway. Mister Howell.
Thank you, once again, for the record Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Applicant has submitted a small scale future land use amendment from residential low suburban to commercial for a five point seven eight nine acre parcel located on the south side of Ponton Road. West of Jason Dwelling Parkway, across from Wolf Lake Elementary and Middle Schools. The applicant is requesting the future land use amendment to commercial to allow the property to be developed as a non-residential portion of the Pelucci Acres P U D. That is currently under review, this is the site location, a little bit of a better look at it. Uh it's approximately here where you see the word site location, this kind of is the natural buffer of it. The schools are across the street, the park, uh the city park is up to the north. Development Review Committee recommends approval, recommended motion this evening is approval, if you have any questions, myself and the applicant are available.
Very well, thank you, Mister Howell, anyone have questions of staff?
I do.
Commissioner Washington.
Sir, I need your help.
Okay.
Need a, I need a macro view here. Pelucci Estates. Suggest a huge piece of property. Now, so um it looks like this, what we're looking at right here is a piece of the overall. Property.
Yeah.
Which has got finished approving the residential piece which is on Vic Road. Which is below. Ponton to the east. So fill it in for me.
Sure.
How does all this fit in?
Right. Yes, and as you've heard from the applicant's representative, it's about a six hundred fifteen acre project. The piece that was just recently uh recommended for approval is down here, this is the forty acres that I've highlighted, it's in blue. Everything that they've outlined in red is the Pelucci property. This is the proposed uh area for the possible city park that's under negotiation. This right here where I'm pointing is the item that's under consideration right now, the commercial piece. Up to the north is more property owned by Pelucci and then on the north side of of Ponton Road. And it goes on the east side, so it's a massive piece of property. Uh six hundred fifteen acres, thousand fifty two units if I recall correctly, is what they had indicated. This piece, there's going to be a commercial parcel that's been depicted on the P U D and we're currently negotiating with the applicant on the fine details of the P U D. But I believe there was a commercial portion proposed right here adjacent dwelling, and this would be another commercial area. So that's kind of the overview of the property and the kind of the missing pieces of it.
So I I presume the customer already, a customer, the applicant is not gonna be uh. Will not find a hardship in in developing it with those lakes that are there. There are lakes there, are there not?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
So uh but, all right, they're aware of it, then they are aware of it.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anyone else have questions of staff? Anyone have questions for the applicant? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion that we find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area. And recommend approval of the change in future land use designation from residential low suburban to commercial. For Pelucci Acres.
Motion by Commissioner Norwood, thank you ma'am, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. All right, site plan number one. Subject Spring Haven Chandler Hills, major development plan, owners Orchid Estates HOA Community. Mega G N G LLC, Jacob Snaveley, four, six, two, five Chandler Road LLC. Matthew and Deborah Shaw, Daphne Martin, H Walter Robinson the third, Yun Sik Om Irrevocable Trust. P M S one R E O LLC, applicant Lou Clason P E, location twenty three fifty West Kelly Park Road, Mister Howell.
Thank you, for the record Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. The applicant is requesting approval of a major development plan with a total three hundred ninety two single family dwelling units at a density of three point three eight dwelling units per acre. On a hundred and seventeen point one six acres. The neighborhood character zone permits a maximum density of five dwelling units per acre. The master plan was approved for this project by the city council on February nineteenth, twenty twenty five, and if you recall, this came before this board. Part of that for a recommendation of approval as well. The design is consistent with the approved master plan and consists of front loaded and rear loaded lots. Lots range from thirty four to thirty four feet to sixty feet in width. Within the form based code area of which this project is located, there are no minimum and max, minimum and maximum lot size and living area requirements in the form based code area. Access to the site is proposed via West Kelly Park Road. A dedication of a thirty foot wide strip for future right of way needs for Kelly Park Road is detailed on the major development plan. Was also detailed on the um master plan that was approved by the city council. Roadway and pedestrian connections will be provided to allow cross access to the properties to the west and east at such time they develop. That was depicted on the master plan as well. In accordance with requirements of form based code, twenty percent of the total site areas required to remain open space. The applicant has provided thirty two point five nine percent of the site is open space. Common recreation elements include amenity and pocket parks, green space with internal trail systems, passive open space recreational areas. And the dedication of a bike trail along Kelly Park Road. That has been kind of commonplace for a lot of developments in the form based code area, the twelve foot wide multi-use path that we've been requiring. The applicant is also dedicating a fifteen foot wide strip and a fifty foot wide strip for future right of way needs for Chandler Road. Along the portion of the property that's under their ownership. Vehicular point of ingress egress will be constructed that will allow access onto the future Chandler Road right of way. The Development Review Committee recommends approval, the recommended motion this evening is approval, uh myself and the applicant are available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mister Howell, anyone have questions of staff?
Yes, sir.
Very well, I do have a quick question, um. Some more of a detail, on the the building setbacks, it says. Ten foot minimum, front street side, fifteen foot minimum, thirty foot maximum rear uh for the rear loaded. Or the front loaded is the fifteen foot minimum, is the fifteen foot minimum from the easement? Back to the actual dwelling, or is that from the street edge to the dwelling?
It's from the back of the curb to the dwelling.
So from the back of the curb, so if there's a sidewalk put there, then it's a ten foot driveway.
Well, it'd be a fifteen foot, so what I was meaning was from the back of the curb, that's where the property begins, so. If you have a sidewalk, it's in the right of way, so it's on their property, that's where the setback begins.
Okay, I understand, all right, very well, all right. Anyone have questions of the applicant?
I do.
All right, the applicant here. There you are.
Luke Classman, eighteen twenty eight Engineering.
You may have an address for the record.
Oh, sorry, um twenty four hundred Mainland Center Parkway, um Mainland Florida three two seven five one.
Uh question I have concerning that stormwater. Um next to the playground for the uh school. Um just a little concerned that a retention pond. Is so close to where kids will be out there playing during the course of the day, I know there's a fence. That the school has between that property and um the school. But again, I, it's a dry pond, correct?
Correct.
Um when it becomes a wet pond, sometimes during the course of the school year. I'm just concerned with, you know. What type of insect activity in that could interfere with the mosquitoes and that um into the school?
Well, um I I will say it's designed as a dry pond, so it's supposed to, it recovers within seventy two hours is the requirements by the state statutes and by the city code. Uh it is lower than the school, so everything will be draining towards it. As a dry pond, it should not say, it shouldn't have water retention in it and produce any insects, wet ponds would typically be more of a concern with that, we have stagnant water.
Yeah.
But as a dry pond, it should recover and you won't have um the the ability for the insects to grow right there.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have questions, the applicant? Thank you, sir. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Very well, bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the Spring Haven major development plan.
Motion by Commissioner Norwood, thank you ma'am, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Do we have any old business?
Uh yeah, um Mister Chair, this would probably fall under old business, Attorney Hand is. I said Mister, uh Mister Chair, this would probably fall under old business, Attorney Hand would like to give a little overview of Senate Bill one eighty and new plating requirements.
Very well. Thank you, and in five minutes or fewer, I've presented both of these topics before, but I I believe not. The full commission wasn't here, some of the times that I did, and I got a specific question as to how it affects this board, these two pieces of legislation. So brass tacks, very simple, uh Senate Bill one eighty is a comprehensive emergency bill that touches upon. Uh development among a number of topics um related to emergency management. And essentially what this bill did when it became law. Is it retroactively to last August and going for forward to October first, twenty twenty seven prohibits the city. From adopting more restrictive or burdensome amendments to its comprehensive plan or land development regulations. Um this is what caused the uh the the comp plan rewrite to to go through some some reworking. Um also prevents any uh type of moratorium. So in other words, what this does is it doesn't change the way that this board works at all. But it does essentially prevent the city from adopting more burdensome requirements accordingly. You can still make recommendations as a board, but it does tie your hands if the city were to adopt something. Uh there are some penalties in place if someone can challenge that and uh. Basically receive a remuneration for that. As far as the other bill relating to plating. What this one does is it essentially takes final plats out of both city council's hands. And out of this board's hands, so going forward and there's been a temporary resolution adopted by city council. Essentially, it makes any plat approval, final plat approval administrative. And there will be a, an ordinance presumably coming before this board next month, uh scheduled for next month. That accomplishes this change as well as dealing with some of the changes from last year for expedited permitting that relate to plating. So that does change how plats are approved, they're now going to be approved by the city administrator. Uh through consultation with the community development part department. Um in order to comply with the law, that said. As board, you still review the master plan, you still go through that site plan process and subdivision. Is contemplated within that process, so you'll still be looking at how the land is subdivided as uh the development goes through the the development pipeline. In a nutshell, that's it, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. In a nutshell, that's it. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer it, uh answer them. Um I'm I'm believe I'm doing some education on a number of topics. Is it next month or okay, next month? So if there's something that you think about between now, if you don't have a question today, but if you read something and and have a question next month, we'll have some time to to further address. Um if you have anything for me, also, of course, always free to send me a message and I'm happy to take a look at it and get you any answer you need.
Did you just mention one bill or two?
Two bills. The uh one relating to emergency management is Senate Bill one eighty. The other one is Senate Bill seven eighty-four that specifically addresses plating.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a like a a brief synopsis of that that could be emailed to us and we can just read it?
Uh the Senate Bill one eight, Senate Bill one eighty is a very long bill. I should have some materials on that. I know uh our firm is gonna be putting out a a memo just updating on some of the legislative updates. I'll I'll try to find one for Senate Bill one eighty. There's already been a lot of material written about it. The plating statute is very short. It it simply just says, hey, this has got to be through the administrative process. Uh now, the rest of the the plating chapter doesn't match that change. So I think that we'll see further changes hopefully um this upcoming legislative session because right now we've got kind of a piecemeal plat chapter that uh unfortunately isn't entirely coherent. Um it's rather contradictory. I there's no other way to to put it. I think, uh you know, it was a last-minute change and and to get it through, I there's no way that the legislature could do an entire chapter rewrite. So they definitely do have some things to address.
Thank you, sir. So just real quick, I think you just said the bottom line is the master plan and the site plan comes to us?
Still goes through the same process, so nothing changes. The only thing that is different is you will no longer have final plats on on your agenda.
That's it.
That's it. You can still ask questions about the subdivision during the pipeline process when you're reviewing uh plans and so forth.
Okay.
Any other old business? Any new business?